We could have.
Good evening, like to call to order the meeting of the Abington School Committee, today being Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016, at the Abington Town Hall. And we have some special guests here tonight, and I understand they're going to lead us in the salute to the flag. Or not?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start off by hearing of visitors. Is anyone here tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to move on to the reading and approval of the records. These are our minutes from January 26th, 2016. Everybody's had a chance to look them over and have any questions?
I just have one quick comment. When Principal Sullivan went through her course selection stuff, weren't we going to add global to one of those course descriptions?
That was added to the program of studies.
Okay, and I just wanted to, because I can see it in the, maybe you can add that sentence.
Okay. Adding global.
It was the history course description, Peter?
Yep. And it did say as presented and amended, but we could be more specific.
Specific what the amendment was, okay. So, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of January 26th, 2016, as amended this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second. On favor?
On my side.
Okay. Next, we have some guests here tonight from Woodsdale Elementary School with Principal and Mr. Matt McCurtin.
Good evening, tonight I have with me Mr. Michael Lodge, sixth grade teacher at the Woodsdale School, and he has several of his students to present to you their projects surrounding a book they read recently in class, Mr. Lodge?
Esteemed members of the school committee, parents, and of course, my students, thank you all for allowing us to attend tonight. What I had my kids do was, they were asked to create an extension of the novel Number of the Stars, written by Lois Lowry, and using a variety of visual aids and also audio aids. This falls under the learning standards of SL 6.5, also SL 6.2, and under the reading standard for 6.7 as well, connected to the Common Core curriculum. What I'm going to have them do is I'll have them come up individually, they can, guys, introduce yourselves when you come up, explain what it is that your, the goal of what you created was, in other words, like the sales pitch or whatever it is you're going to do, and just do your thing, okay? You're a little bit nervous, as am I, so. I'd like to start off with Hannah Murphy and Shannon Groom will be the first to present.
Come on up, girls.
So, I'm Hannah, and we did an interview for Number the Stars, and we did a video.
I'm Shannon, and we, yeah.
Technical difficulties, folks, I just realized that I had forwarded the video to Mr. McCurtin today, thinking it was their video for Number the Stars, and by mistake I sent a video that they made on, in project we made in Egypt, by mistake. So, if you would like to see a project that the girls made on Egypt, instead of Number the Stars, by all means, you girls came here, I'm not going to let you not present the project. So, this is based on, I don't have my objective for this one, this was based on an end of the Egyptian unit at, on the sixth grade curriculum, and I asked the students to try to come up with something to show what they learned from their studies of Egypt, and the girls created this interview with the Pharaoh Hatshepsut. So, this is not Number the Stars, I apologize profusely for the mistake.
All right, girls, I just saved you from embarrassment, sir.
I'm lost, I need to find a home.
What was that? Excuse me? Who are you?
Hatshepsut.
How did you get here?
Ow.
Oh, are you okay?
No.
What's wrong?
I have an injury.
Oh, do you want me to get a band-aid?
What's a band-aid?
It's what you use to cover up cuts, if we, like, get a cut.
We never had band-aids back then.
What you guys used?
We didn't use anything, we just let them heal.
Wow, that's great. Come on, I'll show you where the band-aids are.
Okay, let's go. Is that going to hurt me?
No, trust me, see, it'll just cover up your cut.
Thank you. What are those?
They're cookies, they're delicious, you want to try them?
No, get them away from me.
Well, please, you know.
I don't care, I don't, I don't want to take a chance.
Oh, in school, we're doing a project on Egypt, and I decided to keep you as a person. Could you tell me some facts about yourself?
Yeah, I would love to.
Great, I came prepared. So, I wrote down some questions while you were upstairs. Did you have any children?
Yes, I had one daughter, Nakara.
How many years did you rule Egypt for?
I ruled Egypt for over 20 years.
Wow. So, what were some of your biggest accomplishments?
The people of my land built me the spigs to honor me.
Tell me some things you guys did in ancient Egypt?
Sure, we did farming, mummification, we built pyramids. Also, we had positions to study and work with medicine.
Could you tell me some cool facts about mummification?
Only the royal class got mummified and put into tombs.
Oh, that's cool. All right, let me show you to some cool games that we have.
What games do you have?
I have this game called Sorry Sliders. Did you guys play any games back then?
Yeah, we did chess and checkers.
Oh, we still have that today.
You do?
Yeah.
That was really fun.
Yeah, I had a blast, I'll be telling you, like, how you guys played it, because we had our different ways of playing it.
Yeah.
Okay, next question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Okay.
Hatshepsut, are you there?
Oh, okay. Must have been a dream. Thank you for watching our video, bye!
Once again, I do apologize for the technical difficulties, I sent Mr. McCurtin the wrong video today by mistake. This is Logan, come on up.
You can, Logan, stand right behind the microphone, and you can see the, and you can just kind of, like you were standing up there.
So, I'm here to receive this, and I'm in Mr. Lodge's class, and this is Number the Stars by Lois Lowry, so. So.
Flip the next page.
So, it's Number the Stars by Lois Lowry, and here's a summary, I can't actually read it really well, because I wear glasses, so. That's why. Yeah. So, it's 1940s, and the Johansons live in a small apartment in a German occupied city of Copenhagen, Denmark. Emery Johansson, who is 10 years old, and her best friend Ellen Rosen, who is Jewish, are scared by soldiers that watch people on every street corner. Emery's little sister Kirsty wasn't alive when Denmark, when Denmark was Nazi invaded, so she didn't know as much as Ellen and Emery did. Life for the Rosen's family was difficult, Nazis were taking Jewish families to torture them and kill the Jews. The Johansons and Rosen's team up and hide Ellen as if she was Emery's sister, Liz, who recently died in an accident. They travel to many different places and encounter many risky paths. The Johansons are an extremely helpful family to the Rosen's in the scary time in World War II. The war ends in May, and Emery and her family watches from their balcony as people parade in the streets with the Danish flag. Emery thinks of the Rosen's and realizes what they, what they, what that they, along with the others, who are forced to leave, will soon be returning home. And so, here are the reasons why to get this book. So, it's a good book for everyone, whether girl or boy, child or adult, all readers will love Number the Stars. Students have always used to read this, because it teaches readers valuable events from a time in world history that we hope to never revisit in real life. Number the, and the next reason to get this book is because it's riveting. Number the Stars is a book with lots of information, the way this book is written makes you want to keep reading the story, it has an amazing storyline to it that makes the story even more interesting. And the final reason to get this book is because sensory detail. Number the Stars has lots of sensory detail, the sensory detail in this book is the best part about this book, uses imagery, sound, smell, taste, and feeling of World War II. Here are the awards, Number the Stars got Dorothy Canfor Fisher Children's Book Award, they got the John Newberry Medal Award, and National Jewish Book Award for children's literature. And here are the reviews, for five star ratings, there's 41%, four star ratings, 36%, three star ratings, 19%, two star ratings, 3%, one star ratings, 1%. And my personal review is a four and a half out of five stars. The end.
All right, that is it for our video portion of presentations, now some of these students have some physical things that they made. Kristen, where are you?
Hi, I'm Kristen Parks, and I did the movie poster. So, I have Number the Stars by Louis Lowry, and I drew a picture from, of a scene from the book, and my actors are Ellen Rosen, played Emma, played by Emma Engel, Uncle Henrik, played by Jimmy Fallon, Peter Nielsen, played by Zac Efron, Mrs. Johansson, played by Brittany Snow, Kirsty Johansson, played by Mia Talarico, Anne Marie Johansson, played by Mackenzie Ziegler. And then I have a summary. Number the Stars is a realistic fiction book written by Louis Lowry. Anne Marie and Ellen are best friends that are living in Denmark during World War II. Ellen and her parents are Jewish, so when the rabbi told them that the Nazis were relocating the Jews, they knew they had to hide. Anne Marie's family was not Jewish, so they had Ellen stay with them and pretend that she was a member of their family. Peter Nielsen, who was to marry Anne Marie's sister, who passed away two weeks before the wedding, hid Ellen's parents. The Nazis are suspicious about Ellen. Anne Marie's family, the Johansons, have blonde hair, while Ellen has brown hair. Mrs. Johansson takes both the girls and Anne Marie's little sister Kirsty to stay with her brother Uncle Henrik for a while. Uncle Henrik is a fisherman, so he has a boat, he sneaks on in her parents to Sweden, the only Nazi-free country near them, along with a few other Jews. A few years later, the war ends and Denmark is Nazi-free.
Hi, my name is Jamison Buckley, I did the sales pitch for Number the Stars. Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jamison Buckley, you know me as a student, but today, I'm here to sell you Number the Stars. First, you can buy this wonderful novel for only $9.99, plus shipping and handling, and trust me, it's totally worth it. The two characters are amazing, for example, there's Anne Marie, a young, tiny old girl who is very brave in her journey to save her Jewish friend Ellen from Nazis, from the Nazis. Speaking of Ellen, with the help of the Johansson family, as well as Peter Nielsen, a good friend of the Johansson family, she must go to Sweden to be free from Nazi extermination. Another great character is Mama, Anne Marie's mother, who is a strong, independent woman who is brave enough to lie to a Nazi and not stutter. Also, there's Kirsty, a young girl, a very young girl, who doesn't respect the, any Nazis at all. Another example of a great character is Peter, a resistance fighter that risks his life every day to save Jews and fight the Nazis. Lastly, there's Uncle Henrik, who smuggles Jews to Sweden using his secret room under his boat. Another great reason to buy this book is if you order now at 1-800-783-9418, you can get the luxurious bookmark free, so you can read Number the Stars with no problems at all. You'll want this, you want to buy the book right away, because it is a beautiful story about Anne Marie trying to save her friend Ellen by smuggling her and her family to Sweden. If you don't take my, if you don't take my word for it, you should take the word of the Newberry Medal judges who awarded this amazing novel with the Newberry Award. This book is a timeless classic that you deserve to own.
Trent Dawson, which one wants to go? You want to go, Trent? Okay. Just call them what you made, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Trent, and I did the, I did, I did the book advertisement for Number the Stars. So, it's only nine, $6.99, buy it now, save 50%, that's half off, wow! So, I would rate this book five out of five stars, because, because it was emotional, it was suspenseful, and it was just everything a lot of people would want in this type of book. Also, I like reading, in general. So, a few facts are, this book is based off of Louis Lowry's friend, Annalise, it's a historical fiction story, created in 1989. Kirkus Reviews starred a daffly told story, and the summary of this is, "A historical fiction story on a 10-year-old girl named Anne Marie." Anne Marie lived in Denmark-Copenhagen during World War II, the Nazi invasion. Bless, God bless all of America's soldiers. During said event, Anne Marie had to help her best friend Ellen out of, out to escape Sweden, to escape to Sweden, because she was Jewish, Jewish. So, they went on a journey, plus much more.
Well done, good, okay, good job. I'm going to hold the microphone.
I made a movie poster on Number the Stars by Louis Lowry, and the, the people who are starring it are Mar, Marilyn Street as Miss Johansson, Megan Kaufman as Anne Marie, Lisa O'Donnell as Ellen, Jack Nicholson as Uncle Henrik. Your emotions will run wild, you will find yourself on the edge of your seat. A gripping and suspenseful story of a young Jewish girl trying to survive during the Holocaust and the friends who helped her. A 10-year-old Jewish girl named Ellen lives in Denmark and has a best friend named Anne Marie, who gives her shelter from the German Nazis. It is a story where you will learn about World War II and the horror it brought to Jewish lives, and the love and bravery that the Jewish families and their friends shared with each other.
Okay, and last but not least, Mr. Jesse Spinney, please.
Hi, I'm Jesse Spinney, and I am trying to sell you the book, and I gave a little summary in it, so. Number the Stars by Lois Lowry, for $4.99 plus tax. Why you should buy it, you should buy it because it has fiction and nonfiction information in, in it. Also, it was, it is an interesting book, because it was in World War II, it was in a World War II setting when the Germans, Germans were trying to capture all the Jews, and it is about a girl named Anne Marie who tries to help her friend, who is Jewish, get to Sweden, away from all the Nazis, and all in all, it's a great book. I try to sell it to boys and girls, and anyone who likes to read about history. I would recommend ages eight and beyond, it's in stores now.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our presentation, thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight and show these to you, the kids worked out on these, and I think they did a fantastic job, and they, despite their nerves, I think they pulled it off pretty well. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You all did a very nice job.
Thank you. Great job. Next, we have the report of the superintendent of schools.
As a part of the policies that you approved, one of the policies included that there are certain organizations within the school system that are recognized by the school committee, so each of the principals has just requested that the school committee acknowledge that these parent-teacher organizations are organizations within our public school system, so I just ask if you would consider entertaining a motion to designate the center of the Beaverbrook, the Woodsdale, Frolio, and the high school parent-teacher organizations as recognized groups within the Abington Public Schools. Maybe it's sort of an administrative task, I think, but as we have a policy on it, I thought we should follow it, so.
What would be, since the PTOs have been in existence forever, what's an example of a non-recognized group? I'm just wondering why, excuse me.
Good question.
Oliver Sutter were doing this?
Because we just approved a policy.
Just?
That's why.
Okay.
There are many organizations that we rely on, there are booster organizations, they help us out quite a bit for music and for sports, there are other organizations that we work with across the community, but none that are more closely knit with us than our PTOs, because of the work that they do with our kids, so. The Abington Education Association would be another one, not looking to, to open the door any wider than that, than just the PTOs, because I, not that those other organizations aren't worthy of a lot of appreciation, but if we, if we have a PTO organization at each building level, and those are the ones we designate as the recognized ones, that's a nice place to follow that policy to its, to the letter of the policy, without going any farther, I don't think. Wouldn't be my recommendation, but the school committee could go further if it chooses.
I think the reason for having that as a policy was so that if some other group decided they didn't like what the PTO was doing, and I'm going to start my own, the PTOs that we have now would be, are recognized as a part of the school system.
Just a quick question. So, we'd be looking for a motion to designate the center elementary school, Beaverbrook Elementary School, Woodsdale Elementary School, Frolio Middle School, and Abington High School parent-teacher organizations as recognized groups in the Abington Public Schools.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and also, I don't, I don't believe this is something that should be done every year, I think that once it's done, it's done, we follow the policy, and that's it. Thank you.
So, next we have the superintendent's evaluation from, for school year 2015. We've been discussing this the last meeting or two, and what I've done is taken the information, the evaluations that each of the individual committee members passed, emailed on to me, and compiled a draft summary, which I can email out to the committee in a draft form, and then people can comment, or, you know, we can discuss it, make revisions, and then we can, if people could get their comments back to me within a week, we can decide how we're going to proceed on it. Just a little bit of the history, Peter's, his goals for the 2014, 2015 were distributed back in March, we approved them in April, and so that's why we're at this stage now.
So, we anticipate approval of this in the March meeting?
Right. Think it would be good if we could, people could get their comments back to me, and any discussion, maybe we could get it back within the week. Peter's been, met with a few people, discussions, anything they had that they wanted to follow up with him.
Appreciate the time that committee members have given me in, in discussing the, both, you know, the previous, this year's evaluation, and then going forward, looking for as much input and information as people are willing to give me, and so we can be reflective about it and continue to improve the Abington Public Schools.
So, this will be a draft summary, and I know that last year, we also included people's individual evaluations, I don't know if the board feels about having theirs passed along as well, or?
I don't have any issues in mind being passed to the rest of the school committee members?
Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so, if we can all get it out to everybody tomorrow in a draft form, and then any comments, revisions, can email back to me, and we can take it from there.
Oh, by next Tuesday?
Yep. So, the one we already submitted, you can, you're. I took everybody's comments and evaluations and put it into one document, and then, so that's what I'll email out to people. Okay? So, I don't think we need a motion on that, then? Okay. Thank you. Next, under subcommittees, this, we have the, not to confuse what we just talked about, the new, new superintendent's evaluation process, which Kathy Bailey and Mike Karowski are that subcommittee, and we appreciate the work that they've put into this already.
Well, you got a copy of what we had put together, and I think the only, you don't have one, you got one last time.
Yes.
Made any other. We did talk about changing the topics that were originally listed as unsatisfactory and needs improvement for fishing exemplary, which is what's on the state evaluation. If anyone has recommendations for what you would like them changed to, then I can be, I will happily make the changes on here and then send a copy out.
I'm okay with what you're saying now.
With what you're adding, right?
Well, the comment last time was that people were not happy with, was it unsatisfactory and needs improvement, I think.
I think it was a needs improvement.
I think, kind of, may I try to?
Yep.
The only suggestion that I had was for the midterm plan. The only, um, suggestion that I had was for the, uh, the midterm plan that, I mean, at the end of the year, there's a, there's an unsatisfactory needs improvement for exemplary, but in the midterm piece...
Okay, so it's this one?
Right. There are other factors like budget or, um, regulation that might prevent a goal from being completed and that let, that, just because a goal of the midterm isn't completed...
Right.
It leaves you more open for, well, what more do we need? Do we need, do we need grants? Do we need additional funding? Do we need to go back to town for more money? Whatever that might be, because it might be not just, you can't, maybe you just can't categorize it as needs improvement, there might be something else.
Okay, well, On Target is saying that at the mid-year point, um, you're at, it appears that you've done everything that needs to be done at that point, that you're gonna be able to reach your goal. Um, and I'm not sure, maybe needs improvement isn't the correct term, but I'm not sure what term we're doing.
In the minutes, it said that we need further action.
Further action?
Yep.
Okay. If that's happy, if everyone's happy with that as a topic and that's the only thing on here that people wanna see changed, I can change that in my computer and bring it back at the next meeting. Now, I've copies for everyone. Is everyone satisfied with the timeline?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we don't need a motion because Kathy's gonna make that revision and bring it back?
Yeah, I'll make the revision, I'll bring it back so everyone can take a look at it.
Thank you. Um, continuing on, we have our FY '17 budget update from Mike Karowski and Wendy Happel.
Okay, since the last meeting, we have not met only because the state budget was just announced by the governor. Um, the senate has not come out with their budget, so the budgets are inflexed, so for us to start getting into more detail, into real specific detail at this time doesn't make any sense because we don't know what our budgets are actually gonna be coming in from the state and from any other sources of revenues that we might get. Uh, we did present a preliminary budget, I think it was about a 7.34% increase. Um, I think the level of service budget was roughly 5.3%. Um, so, we, we're shooting for the 7.34%, but we don't wanna drop below the 5.3% because that would cause issues across the board. So, until we can get more information from the state and how much money they're gonna be flowing down to us, it's gonna be tough for us to, to proceed forward. So, hopefully between now and the March meeting, there should be some more information coming out from the governor and hopefully maybe from, from the senate as well, from the state senate as well.
Thank you. Next, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening. So, on February 5th, we had a snow day, so everything for professional development did not happen. And so, it's shifted now to our March 10th. So, we have some things that'll be shifting to the March 10th and then we also have April and May. Um, so, the same focus areas that I've talked about last month in terms of keys to literacy will be taking place, um, as well as the elementary level science curriculum alignment, math talks, and number talks. And then at the, um, high school, it's gonna be curriculum work and educator goals, um, as well as DDM, data analysis, and evidence upload. Um, and then technology integration is going to be moved from February and was moved to May 5th. So, that's a little bit about the update on PD, professional development, but I did wanna give a plug because we have our unified teams that are playing Rockland Wednesday night at 6 o'clock in Rockland. Both communities I've worked in, both communities are so wonderful in terms of their support for kids. Um, this is a great, I just love the unified teams because it's general ed and special ed kids coming together. Um, so, if people are interested in attending, it's always a fun night out.
And what time is it?
Kids are great.
What time is it?
Six.
They changed it to 6:30?
Oh, they changed it?
They changed it to 6:30.
Great. The high schooler just informed us.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. I love that.
Wednesday. This coming. Yep. So, February, um, yeah, so that's just a little bit. Any questions for me?
Uh-uh.
All right, great.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Ms. Michelle.
Thank you. I have a, uh, school building update. They continue to, um, work with the weather and we've been quite lucky. Uh, they continue with foundation pours around the site and kind of the big, next big milestone for this week is, uh, that the crane will be arriving to begin, um, on Thursday, we should start seeing steel being delivered and, uh, that'll start to be erected as soon as, uh, it comes on site. And that will be a, uh, pretty long process, um, weeks if not months of steel delivery, erecting the steel, um, and then, uh, once the steel and the building starts looking like a building, uh, then the iron workers go in and tighten everything up. So, um, it, although it'll look like not a lot is happening, a lot will be happening as, as the steel gets erected and, um, it's, it, that's really an exciting time. We'll really see transformation out there. Um, I wanna encourage people to, uh, to look through, uh, through the webcam that we have on the website. You can find it through the school department website and the school building committee website. Um, we're still, we're receiving, um, our reimbursements from the state monthly. Uh, we submit monthly and we get our reimbursements monthly, so that's still, um, on track. And, uh, as of today, we're still on time and on budget, which is, uh, pretty exciting.
How much of a delay is from the time we submit to the time they reimburse?
Um, it's usually about, uh, three weeks. They review our submission. We submit a big packet with, um, all of the bills, all of the, all the invoices, um, our, our approval, our owner's project manager's approval. They review it and then, uh, they reimburse us about 90% of what we submit. They hold back 10% until they do their final audit at the end, so. And, um, you know, we're working with the town treasurer and town accountant around how much cash flow, monthly cash flow. Um, we get updates from our owner's project manager, from Mary Mahoney, and then we also, um, work closely with, uh, the town accountant and town treasurer in terms of the bar, they've borrowed money and then it's moving the money around, so.
And Felicia, they came, they were onsite two weeks ago?
Yep. Yeah, MSBA.
They smiled and didn't...
(laughing).
So, they do sort of an onsite inspection and they come to our construction meeting and they seemed generally pleased?
Yep. And they'll be doing that again. Uh, they do it about every other month. They'll be onsite.
I know that they've poured the gym slabs.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know, this is more of a specific question, do the floors go right on top of the slab or is there any type of material between the floors?
I think it's, they're, it's floated, the wooden floors then, like, so there is something in between, yep.
Vapor barriers and things like that before you get to the wood.
And they're holding off right now with, um, with pouring more, uh, having more foundation, uh, more slab pours until the weather's more consistent.
Okay. And can they erect the steel where the slab hasn't been poured or do they have to wait for the slab to...
They can erect it. Yep. And then they'll also be pouring slabs on the deck, floor decks.
Right, right. At all times, right.
Yeah.
So, look at the Abington cam.
Look at the cam, yep. Let's say, starting Friday or Monday, we'll start seeing...
Use Chrome.
Chrome?
Your, um, net.
Browser?
Browser.
Browser.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't, it only works under Chrome.
My second item is the facilities' action plan and, um, the goal is to provide state-of-the-art facilities. I'm not gonna go through that, through them because there, um, many of them have been completed around MSBA and, um, awarding, uh, getting a contract, feasibility, the town voting, awarding contract. Um, I'll just call your attention to the last page and that's, "To avail ourselves of alternative funding sources for maintenance and upgrade to school facilities." And, um, just wanted to, to make sure that you knew that we're continuing to do that, um, working with, uh, paint exchange, youth sports groups, um, solar in our buildings. Uh, we don't have any yet, but we, we, um, are actively engaged with different companies at different times during the year, um, looking at the option on our other school buildings and we are, um, absolutely, um, have great hope that we will have solar on the, um, the new building, but, um, it's still, we, it's still a little early in the process to, to engage with company around that. That's the facilities' action plan.
I have one question, speaking of grants, Felicia, how are you doing with the Bay State textile recycling?
We're getting money every month. Um, yeah, I, I don't know exactly, I'll have a number for you next year, a year-to-date for you for next month, um, but, um, they're emptying them out. Um, we're continuing to get, uh, every school is getting checks, yep. I know Beaver Brook had to kind of clean out your closet. I know the springtime is also a big time, um, for that, uh, so encourage, encourage people to, to use the textile boxes. The high school boxes have been moved, uh, to the, to Town Hall. Um, the boxes that are located at North School, those funds go to the Frollo. Uh, all the buildings have them, Woodsdale, Center School has one in their back parking lot, Woodsdale has them. Um, so, if, for all your textiles, the, the money's gonna go to someplace and why not, you know, come back to the school department?
Yeah, it's free money.
Felicia is vigilant about this because after a weekend where my wife and I went to the Salvation Army, I told self, I told Felicia that I did that, just full disclosure, and she, um, was very cross with me that I didn't use the...
Don't blame her. Shame on you.
I bring all my family stuff from, you know, where I live, which is, and so Holliston is not getting it, Abington is. So, thank you for asking and please encourage people to use this.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, next we have, um, under new business and establishing of the next school committee meeting date. Um, Tuesday, March 22nd, 2016, here at the Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Um, so, we were hoping that since our high school student is just back from abroad, um, you'd give us a little update.
Yeah. It was such a great experience.
I'm sorry, can you tell everybody where you went?
Well, we went to Spain. Um, we started off in Madrid for, I think it was like three, maybe four days, and then we like slowly made our way south, stopping in different cities. I think we stopped in maybe six total and it was a really great experience. Um, like, one of my friends, he said, like, it's so different, like, sitting in Spanish class than being like dropped in and just speaking it with people. And I, we were all kind of surprised because a lot of people like did speak English and we were trying to speak Spanish and they're like, oh yeah, I stand on the left, and then we're like, okay. But, it was, it was a really fun trip. Um, like, the group of people that we went with, like, we all just kinda had fun with each other and we weren't really like the closest of friends, but we all like had fun with each other on the trip. So, that was really good. Like, it was a good group of people that won. And all the chaperones, they were like really fun. Like, they, they made it really interesting. Um, our tour director, she was so funny. Um, her last name is Casa Grande and like in Spanish that means big house, so, yeah, so that's what we were calling her all week and she was really funny. Um, the food, I liked it a lot, but, uh, I know other people, like, they weren't used to it. They liked a lot of ham over there. So, it was kind of interesting, like, we're having ham sandwiches for breakfast. It was just, it was different, but, I mean, it was a lot of fun. Like, um, all the activities that we did, like, the days were long. Like, we were out probably at 8:30 from the hotels and then we didn't get back till maybe 10, 10:30, but it was a lot in one day, but it was so much fun. Like, I think, 'cause we were all kinda like keeping track of our steps and seeing who could do the most, and I think one day, um, me and a few of my friends, we just kinda went exploring in our free time and we, um, managed to get to like 10 and a half miles. So, it was a lot of fun.
It is juniors and seniors, right?
Yes, it was juniors and seniors.
Would you recommend it to your, now that you're a senior and leaving us to your other year?
Oh, yeah. Like, it does seem like a lot of money at first, but it's totally worth it. (laughing). All the summer hours paid off. Yeah, it was...
If you go back and do one landmark or one monument or one thing that you saw, what would it be?
Um, that's tough. I think it would be a tie between Segovia and, uh, Granada because in Granada, we did like a scavenger hunt and we broke up into groups and each group had like one of the chaperones. In my group, I had Miss Daisy, um, and it was just a lot of fun because we're all running through the streets asking people for stuff and it was just funny 'cause other people were like, why are you so worried? And other groups, if you, like, asked certain shops, they'd be like, no, we can't help, like, because they told them not to help us. So, it was, it was fun competition. And then Segovia, that was just gorgeous. Um, there was like a giant aqueduct and the streets were like so small, there was actually a road race the day that we went. So, like, um, the local guy was like, move out of the way, like, um, 'cause like they would've run us over. But it was a lot of fun, like, that was a gorgeous town, like, the view, um, from one of the chapels was unbelievable. Like, it looks like it was like fake. It was so nice.
How was the weather?
Not what we expected.
'Cause it was frigid when you left here.
Yeah. Um, but it's funny, um, a lot of our local guides, like, when we got there, they were like, yeah, this is weird, like, last week it was like 60s and the temperature was like 40s, like high 30s. So, it was, it wasn't really what we were prepared for, but like we were used to it, so it wasn't as bad. But, yeah, it was just different because like this is the first cold day we've had all year and we're like, of course it is. But, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
They tweeted out wonderful, wonderful pictures and video. I mean, you guys had fun.
Oh, yeah.
Dancing and...
Yep. It was a lot of dancing.
A lot of fun, yeah. It was like a great trip.
That's great.
We had a few bumps in the road, but we made the best of it, so, it was fun.
Good. Thank you for sharing with us.
Yeah, the informational items. So, um, in your, in your packet, there's communication from, uh, the town clerk about the elections and, um, being held for the town at Emerald Hall, which is the former VFW at 30 Central Street with the construction project. Um, the, that's the best place for the community, um, to go. The, the parking, um, as I'm sure you're probably already aware, is just so tight and it's so chaotic around that site. It does, it will not serve, uh, the community well as a site for elections, so moving it to one place like that is, um, I think, a great move. Um, and so, that's a notice that we've published to the town and we wanna make sure that, um, the community knew about it. We also have a communication from, um, Mike Dorado, the director of our art department, uh, with regard to the Scholastic Art Awards. Um, I hate reading to you, but, um, Mike does a nice job of describing this. I'm pleased to share with you the news of the recent successes of our students at the Scholastic Art, um, and Writing Awards, an annual competition for students, grade seven through 12, in all public and private parochial schools in the state. The program recognizes the outstanding achievement of art students and encourages them to pursue further study in the visual arts. Every year, thousands of pieces of art are submitted in different categories, including architecture, comic art, ceramics, glass, digital art, design, drawing, fashion, film, animation, jewelry, mixed media, painting, photography, printmaking, sculpture, video games, and art portfolios. There were over 400 different participating schools, let alone the number of students coming from each of those schools. And Jared April, uh, was awarded an honorable mention in photography. Emily Boyle, an honorable mention in drawing and illustration. Chris Doucette, Silver Key in Photography. Abigail Edwards, Silver Key in Digital Art. Taylor Johnson, honorable mention in drawing and illustration. Taylor Johnson, Silver Key in Photography. Um, Ethan Tachi, honorable mention in Portfolio. Winners at the Frollo Middle School are Catherine Janest and, uh, honorable mention for drawing and illustration, and Lydia Vidal, Silver Key in Drawing and Illustration. So, all of these, um, pieces of art, along with the ceremony for the Silver Key winners, are held, uh, at the Museum of Fine Arts. Um, I also believe there are different spots that, that some of this work is exhibited. And then, in the spring, every year, the art department has a nice showing at our Abington Town Library. We'll let you know when that occurs because, um, our students excel in this area and they go out and do great things. Um, well, just before I do, dates to remember, you've gotta save the date for the Day on the Hill. That's April 26th. We just got this, we didn't get this in time for the packet. Um, just for those of you that are interested, you'll have to let Teresa and I know. This is where we get our opportunity to talk to our state legislators about, um, things like funding and unfunded mandates and share with them our views on, um, education in Abington and our needs as a municipality or community in the Commonwealth. So, just let us know. So just let us know, we go to that every year. So it's a chance to advocate for schools with our elected officials. Under Dates to Remember, we have Tuesday, March 1st, is the presidential primary election, and that's at the Emerald Hall. Wednesday, March 2nd, the Green Wave Booster Meeting at the police station at 7:30. On Tuesday, March 8th, we have the School Building Committee at the police station at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, March 8th, we also have the Music Parents Meeting at the high school at 7:00 PM. On the 10th of March, we have an in-service early release day, hopefully it won't snow on that one. Tuesday, March 22nd, we have our regularly scheduled school committee meeting here at the town hall, and on the 25th, all schools will be closed. If anybody has any questions, just...
Can I add one thing to the list? On Sunday, March 20th, this is St. Patrick's Day Parade.
On Sunday, March 20th, this is St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Hopefully with no snow on the ground.
There's no one here from last year.
Yeah, from last year. Be looking for a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else this evening.
I'll second.
Call a favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.